Okay, perfect. Okay, I have soon we're done. I have the interview down because Wednesday I'm going to be here for a week. So of course, everything has to be in a time of suffering. I scheduled this trip a year ago. So I never know. It'll work. Yeah, it'll work. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Well, good evening. Hope you all staying cool in this warm summer weather. And I would like to call the meeting to order of the East Porter County School Board of Trustees for Monday, July the fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Would you all please rise in the pledge allegiance and remember that the woman is silent? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So there's two public inputs then, one on the hearing and one.
Correct.
Okay, so the next item is a public input on agenda items. Does anybody, does anybody sign in?
Nobody signed in.
Okay. That end. So then we will move on to consent agenda. And I will certainly accept the.
You can experiment before that. We have a preliminary determination here.
Okay, we will do that then.
Yeah.
I have a regular script to follow here. Well, as Dr. Case has said, the next item on the agenda is for the board to hold a preliminary hearing on the proposed project. If you are interested in speaking at this part of the agenda, the hearing, please make sure it's signed in the signup sheet, which should include your name and address. Sarah, I think you have the forms right over there. And after a presentation by the administration and its advisor, there will be an opportunity for the public to make comments about the project. And at the hearing, we will ask that each person limit their comments to three minutes and that the topic be limited to the proposed project under consideration. The notice of this preliminary determination hearing was published as legally required. And at this time, I would ask that Dr. Case explain the purpose of this hearing.
Thank you, Mr. McSperan. Pursuant to Indiana Code six dash one point one dash twenty dash three point one, a school corporation must hold two public hearings and adopt a resolution to preliminary determine the issuance of bonds or enter into a lease for a project which has a total cost in excess of certain thresholds. These public hearings and the future consideration of resolutions are the very beginning of the legal process. We note that the board action is legally required. There is no board action legally required at this hearing. Rather, this hearing is solely to hear the public comment regarding the project.
Thank you. Dr. Case, I'm going to ask again if you could give us the process of determining and communicating the project to the community under need for this project.
Sure. So what we have been traditionally doing here at East Porter County Schools, we have been asking the board to approve the issuance of general obligation bonds. And that is to help offset some of the expenses that we incur in our operating, our operating fund. It's been very important to the district to reduce the amount that we transfer from the education to the operations. And we've been able to reduce that in utilizing and leveraging Geo bonds to help us accomplish some of our capital projects. And with some of the other things that we would experience in operating. So we are asking for a five million dollar Geo bond, which will help us do some facility improvements, work on some of our HVAC, it'll help with some of the, um, offset the cost of our school buses in, let's see, HVAC, facility, technology, thank you. And just trying to offset and utilizing the operating funds so simply so that we are having to transfer. The biggest part for us is not to transfer from education to operation and keep that amount as small as possible.
Dr. Case, we now will hear from Baker Philly Municipal with advisors about how the proposed project will be financed, as well as information about the effect on the typical property tax paper.
Good evening and thank you for having me at tonight's hearing. My name is Jason Tatchell with Baker Philly and we represent the school corporation as its municipal advisor. Now that we've heard about the project scope, we will now review how the school corporation could pay for this project through the issuance of a five million dollar bond that would be repaid through the school corporation's debt service funds of a property tax levy would be levied. It's important to keep in mind tonight that we are discussing and establishing maximums. These are maximums that we cannot exceed, but we can't come down from. They would include items such as the borrowing amount, the repayment term, the interest rate, and the maximum annual payment. Also important to keep in mind, as you will see from our presentation here, that the school corporation will be able to issue this bond without increasing its debt service levy above twenty twenty-five levels. So while all those being constant, if assessed value were to remain the same, we would not anticipate an increase to the debt service tax rate if assessed values remain the same. So now we'll turn to slide two to review a summary of these maximums. Again, a maximum borrowing amount not to exceed five million dollars. After a cost of issuance, we're estimating about four point eight million for the project in its totality. Right now, we are assuming a five-year repayment term, but the maximum is being established at seven to provide flexibility to the school corporation should something unforeseen happen in the next few months. Using an interest rate of five percent, we are assuming an interest cost of eight hundred and thirteen thousand dollars and establishing a maximum today at an interest rate of six percent. Also, the maximum annual payment is five million and fifty thousand. And this would be a three-year repayment term. This would be as quickly as the school corporation could pay off this debt as possible while also factoring in interest expense. And then finally, as you will see, we are not anticipating an increase to the debt service levy that is zero. And if assessed values remain at a twenty twenty-five level of one million, five hundred and thirty thousand, five hundred and thirty thousand dollars, we would not anticipate an increase to the debt service tax rate. Our next slide is just a summary of where the school corporation's tax rate has been over the last six years since twenty twenty. And you can see that every single year it has had a decline since twenty twenty and today's level at eighty-one point five cents. The, uh, thank you. When we are discussing the bonds tonight, again, we've established that these bonds would be repaid through the debt service funds. So that is the bottom color, that darker blue colored bar. We can see the debt service tax rate in twenty twenty was fifty-six cents. And today in twenty twenty-five, that debt service tax rate is forty-eight cents. Next slide, please. The school corporation would be able to replace debt that is currently coming to maturity. As you can see, there, there are currently five bonds, four bonds outstanding, and then a few common school fund loans. And you can see that we have bonds coming to maturity, more specifically those twenty eighteen bonds are coming to maturity here in twenty twenty-seven. And we also have smaller payments on our twenty twenty-three general obligation bonds. And it's this declining debt service structure that would allow the school corporation to potentially replace these payments as they come to maturity if it so chooses. And this would allow us to not increase the debt service levy. Next slide, please. Here you can see in the blue colored bars, we would anticipate the proposed repayment term of the five million dollar general obligation bond at a five-year term. Again, you can see that we are assuming the five-year term, so all debt would be repaid by twenty thirty. And there would still be a drop in payments in twenty twenty-seven and twenty twenty-eight. And again, all debt repaid by twenty thirty. So all of you debt will be repaid within a decade, which is fairly quickly when we look at rating metrics and when we go discuss potential bonds with rating agencies. They do tend to look at the repayment terms of your obligations outstanding. And then finally, uh, we are discussing general obligation bonds here tonight. And there is a limitation as to how much an entity can issue for general obligation bonds. It is two percent of one-third of your most recent assessed value. As we discussed earlier, that's one billion, five hundred and thirty-two million. Once we factor in those twenty twenty-three general obligation bonds, you will see that there is eight million, one hundred and seventy-three thousand available for a general obligation bond issuance. So the five million being discussed here tonight fits within this. I'd be happy to answer. Turn back over to Dr. Case or answer any questions.
But there's one of my questions would be, the legislature, this, one of the things we've been told is the debt service isn't protected anymore. So how does that affect Geo bonds?
That is a great question and.
That's why they, that's why they give me the big bucks.
So the question is about the potential for the debt service fund to potentially receive some of the credits from written into Senate Bill One. And I, I, right now, we believe that those credits may impact the debt service fund. And so looking at those credits and thinking about the allowable operating balance that the school corporation has in debt service fund, we, that is something we are, are tracking as far as if the debt service fund were to receive some of those credits, making sure there is enough cash within that debt service fund.
One other question. What are your latest Geo bonds? What have they sold?
Sorry, a little bit, approximately four percent, maybe a little bit under four percent. So again, the eight hundred and thirteen thousand that was discussed is a super five percent.
Thank you, Jason.
Appreciate it.
We will now open the public hearing. Remember, if you'd like to speak, please sign in with the sheet that Sarah Carter has. And as I mentioned earlier, we ask you to state your name and address and limit your comments to the proposed project and financing. Keep any comments to three minutes and avoid being repetitive. So Sarah, has anybody signed up? I certainly want to give people the opportunity if they'd like to sign in. Okay. Ask one more time. Would anybody else like to speak?
I have one more question, right? So, so if we have, if we go out the Geo bond for, for five million, if we wanted to Geo bond again in two years, the same, the Senate bill that just passed wouldn't restrict us from doing that? The parameters right now, unless they change the rules to two years?
I would want to look at that again because there, there are limitations to the general obligation issuance process depending upon the repayment term and prior general obligation bonds. And so I can get that answer for you afterward, next second from the minister of administration.
Because one of the concerns and things that they're looking at, especially when it comes to referendum, because there has to be a quoting quote cool off period.
All right, good. So thank you all for listening this evening. We appreciate your time and interest in the project and the future of our communities. And please note that this is just the first step in the legal process. No board action is legally required at this hearing. Rather, this hearing is solely to hear public comment. And the board will continue to work with the administration and its professionals to look for efficiencies, to conserve tax dollars while meeting our educational needs. And the board will hold a second public hearing in this board room on August the fourth, two thousand and twenty-five at five thirty P M. And ends this portion here. And now we'll go back to the regular agenda. And on there is the consent agenda. And I will look for a motion that you have. Sorry about kind of. Okay, sorry. I have one that you need one there. First one wouldn't write. So Kevin was kind enough to give me another one. Anyway, so I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of item three A approval minutes of this this session, July the fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Approval of the minutes work session, July the fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Also, financial matters payroll, July fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five business meeting. Financial matters claims list from July the fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. And item three E, which is approval of personnel report dated today, July the fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. That's your motion. So moved by Mr. Martin. Second by, uh, my, I'm good friend. Liz McBalls. Any questions, comments? Seeing them and I certainly am going to call the question, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, three A, three B, three C, three D, or three E. Signified by raising a hand. One, two, three, four, five, six. Motion passes six, zero. Next item is action items.
Just remember, Karen, before we do that, I would like to announce that we do have two of the candidates.
Great.
Presence. His son has just been approved to be the new varsity baseball coach at Washington-Tomser.
All right.
And Mr. Duzan has just been voted in to be the new athletic director at Kats.
Congratulations. Any words of wisdom you want to share this evening?
I'm good. Thank you.
Mr. McSperan, if I could, I would, um, I just want to say thank you to the board. I've served as our union president for our teachers' federation for the last five years. And I truly appreciate the collaboration that we had. I hope that continues with the person who will take my place. That will be an election process. So I don't have any control over that, but I certainly thank you for that. And I thank you for the opportunity to serve as the athletic director at Kats. I'm looking forward to that and serving our coaches and athletes as well. So thank you very much.
Appreciate you, both of you.
Thank you. So I just wanted to say thank you to Kevin for the years you put in. And you know, we're adjusting past practice to do this. And, and we wouldn't do it if we didn't think we had a quality person that we were putting in that position. And Spencer, you gave a tremendous interview, so you're filling big shoes. But I think you're up to it from everything I've had seen. So good luck to you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
I have an eighth grader. He's the last one of mine. You can try and talk into me in a picture.
Is he left-handed?
Let's see. I could probably go.
That's all right. As long as you throw strikes, we're good to go.
Yeah, that's right. It's true.
Well, thank you. Yeah. Moving on, we have action items. And four A is approval of the two thousand twenty-five to two thousand twenty-six classified handbook.
So we're asking the board to approve the new handbook with the changes that have been highlighted for easy access as presented.
Again, so moved by Mr. Martin. Is there a second?
Station.
Station? Okay. This is Terpstra. It's been movement second. Have any comments, questions?
I'll just say thanks to Lisa and Kim and the team that put all the time in our job.
It's a lot. That's for sure. Appreciate that. Seeing other comments or questions, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of action item four A, approval of the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six classified handbook. Signified by raising a hand. Motion passes six, zero. Next item is action item four B, which is approval of the East Porter County Corporation Professional Growth and Evaluation Plan.
So there's been a little change to the state's expectation of evaluation plans. No longer do we necessarily have to submit it to the state. However, they still need to be board proof and we will have to post them online. There's also been some changes in the state to the expectation where they've done away with the rubrics. And so you get to, you get to have a little bit more vocal control. So Mr. Kaufman and met with a group of teachers. We had an evaluation committee that we've had over the past few years. And so our teachers have worked with Mr. Kaufman and Mrs. Schnick have gone through and made some recommendations to a change in the teacher component of the evaluation system. So we are asking the board to approve it so that when their teachers come back, they know exactly what their expectations and how the evaluation process will be going through this year. Again, there is a separate sheet that highlights the, the changes.
And Dr. Case is, there are motion for action item four B. Moved by Mrs. McBalls. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Sometimes I can't tell the voices apart. Sometimes people have colds and summer colds and everything. Thank you, Mrs. Star. Any other questions up?
Just in, in the plan, the number of observations has changed, correct? Could the number of formal observations has changed? And for, we bounced that back. For seasoned, for seasoned veteran teachers. For our new people, they have not.
One of my questions over the years has been, I know that administrators like Chris would be doing. Do you see them then?
The actual evaluations? I do not see the evaluations at the end of the year until everything has been closed. And then I can go back and review them because they're all held digitally.
I do have a question. You, when you spoke, you mentioned that they will be built online. Is it just the, like what, the understanding? Or is it just a generalized, like how everyone did?
This plan, the plan that you all have will be exactly what's put out online because that's what needs to.
Okay, just one other. I should said it. I was like, wait, I don't think he means, you know, teachers who, you know, once the evaluation is done.
No, it is, it is the actual plan. This document that you have on the news, like it's displayed.
One of my questions was, and I don't know that I saw it in, in the summary sheet. So are the evaluations done, tried to be done in the first half of the year or the second half of the year? Or when there's only one?
It's a great question. When it comes to that, it goes to valence of time. So what's not necessarily in the evaluation for the administrators' wall? So if we see that a teacher is struggling or anything, that evaluation needs to be done before December so, so that we can help them with an improvement plan? But no, the, um, our goal is usually to have them done by March, April. But sometimes just life is what life is. And so it doesn't necessarily get done till the end of April, first part of May. But all new teachers are done, their first observation, and we've got administrators here that can back me up. The first one has to be done before Christmas, simply to help them as well so that they have that opportunity for that improvement. But yes, we always should have everything done before March. But the expectation that we have is if a teacher is struggling, that is done before December. And then we can work with that teacher and the union to try to help them get improved.
Just a big picture question. So, so when that happens, when, when we do an improvement plan, do we generally see improvement?
I've not done an improvement plan here in East Porter in my two years. The, the ones that I've done in my past, it's about fifty-fifty. I mean, the, the goal is really to, to bring in, to improve and to bring in veteran mentor teachers and, and opportunities for that struggling teacher to see good teaching, not necessarily just in their discipline, but in other disciplines. Because again, good teaching is good teaching. And it is truly our desire because we've invested in that person by hiring them in the first place. We want to see growth. We want to see improvement. And we want to see what our kids get is the best that they can get.
So are all of the new teachers partnered with somebody?
Yes.
And, and the principals choose that partner based on what you think would help them?
Based, based on what we think would, at least my experience has been based on what we think will be a good match in personality. And, and also again, um, looking at our high-quality educators and what they can mentor and, and help with a, a, a new person. Whether that's fresh out of college and new to the profession or new to our corporation.
Same for you.
Yes. Usually when we pick someone as a mentor, we look for, you know, if it's, if it's a core teacher, we may find him another core teacher. If it's a teacher that made you band or something where it's a less, more flexible on a daily basis, we may look for somebody, another teacher that has a more flexible class as well that is not necessarily just sitting with kids at desks all day long so that they can work with them on, on, you know, handling and, you know, classroom management and so forth, even though it's not quite as structured as it might be in some board classes.
And the other thing that we've started to do too at the elementary is we try not to pair them up with their grade level team. Simply because they get too familiar with their grade level team. And if they're struggling or anything, it's hard to have that conversation with your mentor when it's your team. So we, we've started looking at like primaries with primary. But it doesn't necessarily have to mean that first grade teachers are mentoring that first grade teacher, simply so that they get exposure to other people and have that ability to, to really.
One of our, one of our previous goals as a board always was to make this a less stressful situation. Do you feel like it is a less stressful situation than it was in the last couple of years? You've only been there two years here.
Right. The, the teacher evaluation process is a, is a cumbersome process for, for administrators. It does take up.
And I mean, for the teachers, teachers were stressed.
I, I, I think they still are. I mean, even, even good teachers, and I'm sitting next to an outstanding one, who was M V V in, in Valpo. They want to do well. And, and they, they want recognition for when they're doing well, and they also want to know when they can improve. And so no matter how much we try to make it a process that's not intimidating and, and not a gotcha moment, I think people are nervous when their boss steps into their, their classroom to see what's happening.
Do they have advance notice?
Sometimes. Sometimes it's, it's a matter of popping in, of us popping in. And, and we will tell them, hey, in the next week or so, at least what my experience has been, we'll tell them in the next week or so, we're going to be in your classroom for a short, for a, for a walkthrough. And there are times where we will talk to them and say, we want to find a date that you're going to feel comfortable with your, with your content, and we want to see you at your best. So it's a mix.
Same for you.
Same thing. Yep. If it's a short or a walkthrough, I normally don't tell them in advance. But if it's a formal evaluation, then you know, the majority of their evaluation is going to come from that because you really get into all of the areas. And I try to make sure that they are well aware when it's going to be so that they, they feel prepared. Because you don't want them trying to teach when they're nervous and unsure themselves. You want them to be confident.
And I would add that there are moments where we're not going to see every marking category in that rubric. And so that's. category in that rubric and so that's where discussion happens. And again, I, I, I know you do this, but, but I want to trust but verify, when's a good time to come see this? Or do you have evidence that you can share that would support this particular measurement point?
And one of the most important parts of the whole evaluation process is the dialogue and conversation, because that's what the goal is, is just to help people. I will tell you, within my first couple of months here at East Porter, I was sitting in a discussion and I had a veteran teacher who's been highly effective for 25 years and they told me they have never been told by an administrator that it could be better because they've always been highly effective. And so the emphasis that we have on there is having that dialogue, that's how we improve instruction, let's have a conversation of, hey, have you thought about, would you look at, and that's the part that we're really working to have. And the feedback that I've got on that part and the dialogue their principals are having, are having, has been drastically improved.
Good, good comments, good questions, anything else? You guys have any comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor of action item four B, approval of East Porter County School Corporation Professional Growth and Evaluation Plan, signify by raising a hand. That passes six, zero. Next item, action item is four C, approval of the district goals for the 2025-2026 school year.
So one of the most important things that we can do in this room is provide direction. And through the board's listening tours, through my conversations with the board, through having just different conversations throughout the year, in front of you are, with our retreat, are the areas or the priority areas that we have put together to help give us direction and guide our decision-making process for this upcoming school year. I know we have seen, oh my gosh, for me it seems, it looks like, or feels like we've been looking at this for quite a while and just trying to revise and give it up to speed. And so we're asking the board to, you know, we've had conversations and discussion, but I'm just asking the board to formalize it so that as we get ready to have our staff kick off, our administrative meeting, that I can say, ladies and gentlemen, this is the direction now we're heading and we're all going in the same direction.
Do I hear a motion for action item four C, approval of the district goals for the 2025-26 school year? Moved by Mrs. Terpstra, is there a second? Second by Mrs. McCall's. Any comments, questions? I'm curious, one of the things that I look to you, I look to you like I used to look to Frank DeSweet as the techie and the metrics person, do you feel like the metrics in our, are measurable?
Yes, mostly, there, some of them are a bit intangible, so we're going to have to allow some leeway as we go, also, this is my first year on the board rate, so kind of figuring out how we do measure things. I think it's enough to measure. As a metrics person, six months from now, maybe we look at those metrics and say, is this working for us? Maybe we need to add some more quantifiable ones. But I'm, I'm comfortable moving forward with it at this time.
But I appreciate that. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor, again, of action item four C, approval, the district goals for the 2025-26 school year, signify by raising a hand. That motion passes six, zero. And we recognize they're lofty and will keep us busy.
But it's a great, you know, hit one by the time, so.
Exactly. Okay. Yeah, okay, next, action item is four D, approval to replace and extend east fence at Morgan Township.
So in front of you, we've got a proposal, this has actually been a couple of years coming. Yes, we are looking at the damage that came because of the storm, however, when we redid the track and added the retention ponds, we tore out a good portion of the fence there on the north side that never got replaced. In addition to this, we're also utilizing this as an opportunity to try to save some of our soccer balls from going to the retention ponds and going across the street, hence the additional height of the fence. With the positioning of the Morgan Township field, we don't think that the nets that we have like at the other two campuses are necessary, simply because the fence is far enough away from the soccer field, we believe just by heightening that, it will take care of a lot of those concerns and issues on that. So we're asking the board to approve the fences presented, that's just some direction I would like, because it's different.
But here a motion for approval to replace and extend east fence at Morgan Township.
So would.
Moved by Mrs. McCall, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Vanessa Moore, Mrs. Moore. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor of approval to replace and extend the east fence at Morgan Township, signify by raising a hand. Motion passes six, zero. Next item is action item four E, playground addition at Washington Township Elementary.
So in front of you is a proposal, it's got, and I know Mr. Kaufman reached out to multiple vendors, we had basically two that ended up responding, each of them gave us a couple different options. And so the money that we're utilizing is some of the leftover from the bond when we built the addition. If you look at our current playground and you can see Mr. Kaufman is joining us virtually, he happens to be in Fort Wayne. But he is so much better first and he can answer the questions probably better than I can. But what he's kind of done is kind of pared it down to two different options. And I believe his first, his first option is his preference, the one for $96,000. And then just looking at that, simply because it gives more play items for students and we can accommodate more kids, it's, it's a little bit bigger. Yeah, the second one has a little bit more ADA compliance to it, or not compliance, but.
Accessibility.
Yeah, usage, so that it could be there. However, none of our students that we have on campus require those because those students that would be those would not, are not in our attendance, it would be on the weekends that would utilize it more as a park as opposed to playground. Nonetheless, we are looking at, let's just take care of this person, then I'll tell you what else we're looking to do over the years. So I did have Mr. Kaufman available, if anybody had any specific questions or regards, but Mr. Kaufman, I do believe your first preference is option number one?
That is correct, and then I also spoke with the lady who helped set up option number one, to see if there were some ways to change a couple of things around if needed, for around the same price, to help with ADA, and she did say that those net swings that are on that option one are ADA compatible. And then she also has another option for a spinner that is ADA compatible, if that's something that we would want to go with. Really, just looking at the two options, option one gave us more bang for our buck with more pieces of equipment to kind of spread our kids out and give them more places to go.
So if all those east, the, the options all go east or are they, or are they south?
I think they can, the lady that did option one put it on the south side, so it's extending from the swings, so it would kind of like wrap around the pavilion. The second option is going to the east and I kind of did it that way, just in case we didn't move the discus pit. Because right now the discus pit does kind of land into the playground and we really have nowhere else to go, so if we can move the discus pit, then we can extend out further that way, but I didn't know what the plan was going to be for that, so we went with two different options.
That would be, my concern would be, I know if we go that way, it would be the discus pit, it's also, how close to that, that little, that summer rec baseball field is it? How, how close would this be to the baseball field?
It wouldn't be that close, I think it only goes like 35 feet out from where it is now, so. You've got a lot of space out there.
Has there been coordination of where the discus pit might go?
Yes.
Because that's been an issue for years.
Yes.
Besides across the field?
Actually, they're looking at, there's a concrete pad already towards the outfield of that little league field.
Throwing circle to the, beyond the left field fence. It's an asphalt throwing circle.
Used to be the shot.
Between the track and the field?
Yeah, so the turn two of the track and then left field of the baseball field, right along the tree line, is a asphalt circle. You said it was the former.
We used to throw shot, when I was there, but we'd throw the shot put over there.
So discus would work there.
Discus would.
I, that would be, I don't know what the space is at this time.
Yeah. Discus is thrown further than shot.
Correct.
But it would require you to lose a section of the property.
Of the outfield fence and what it would throw into the outfield.
Where discus won't have the impact that a shot put would.
Well, is there ever a middle school issue in the ball of that field being used?
We, we send blackout dates to the league and say, on these nights, this is when our competitions are, so we ask that you do not hold a baseball cane.
And they're not supposed to be doing it during track practice either, because you could be throwing the disc and people could be walking through there, so.
How much defense are we talking about removed?
Ten, ten, ten feet, eleven feet.
At the very back?
At the very back, yeah, left field fence at the, at the foul pole. And putting a, putting in an extendable fence, attempt, yeah.
But if that's where the discus is, where's the shot?
Shot stays where it's at, it's out, turn three between the track and the, yes, correct.
Any other questions, comments?
I do have a question, does the budget even for one or two include like mulching or a base, you know, foundation, I see, and you know, included, excuse me, included installation, equipment, freight, that kind of stuff, but is it, they include, you know, putting, if you have mulch or tire, whatever you have, Washington Township, if you want to use a new, but does that price include that?
I believe they put mulch as a line item in there because we do replace the mulch every year, but we would need 12 inches, I believe, of base underneath the equipment. Yeah, so I do believe that there's a line item on there.
I don't see it.
It's on the other one, you've got the second one. Yeah, I just supplied, it said wood.
Surfacing is under there, on the second one.
Yes, surfacing, you're right, supplied the engineer's wood fiber, but the first one, I didn't see it.
I'm looking at it right now.
You have maps, though, I don't know, there should be a listing.
Yes, I don't see it on that one, but I do know that we had talked about doing that, so I'll talk to her.
Well, I have a question, so for, I could lean towards option one for the playground, but I would like just for it to be accessible from the playground to the parking lot, making it completely accessible so that.
So that is something that is not necessarily in this particular proposal, Mr. Ken Norley and I talked about that today, and that is something that we as a district can actually take care of ourselves. He's already talked with Randy and Don and so they've got a plan to actually two different places where they want to connect it. Currently, there is a, if you look at the east side of that block building, we're looking at putting concrete that will square that off and connect it right to the asphalt, which is where the basketballs are. And then the other part is we're looking at a way to connect it from where the pavilion in there, currently there's like some rubber tiles in there, we're looking at putting the concrete slab in there. We would have it so that it gradual, there's a gradual slope from the mulch to that asphalt, which would allow for any wheelchairs or stuff to be in there. So we already have a plan for that outside of this and that's just something that we can pick up as a district as part of our operations, because we would be laying the concrete ourselves four inches thick. There's a couple of different areas where we've done that. Don Craig and team are already on that.
Yeah.
Which will also give us a nice entryway into that block building.
The block building is what, the concession, the old concession.
Yep, and so, and it takes away some of that money, because one of the challenges that we have too in our, in the buildings and we'll work with, Mr. Kaufman and his team is creating those alleyways so that kids are utilizing this sidewalk all the way and keeping some of that mud out of the buildings as well.
Well, I certainly will entertain a motion for the playground addition at Washington Township Elementary would be plan one. I would move to approve plan one with consideration that mulch is included.
And just being able to right now, so I'll get back to them.
And that ADA, what, what Mrs. Moore asked for is also a part of the plan.
Except, the only concern that I would have, Mr. Martin, on that is I would ask for that cost to be in addition to this.
Which cost?
For the concrete.
Yeah, the concrete. But on one of these plans, they've got mulch and I would think it would have been on both of them.
Correct.
So that's my motion, is it clear, Mr. Martin?
I'll second that.
Okay, Mrs. Moore, moved by Mr. Martin, seconded by Mrs. Moore, so playground addition at Washington Township, plan one with mulch and included, and then we take care of the ADA part. And it includes moving the shot, with the understanding, so that it's already out there in the public right now, that the shot put, discus, discus pit is going to get moved. Shot put is where it's always. Okay, any other questions, comments? I'll see them and I'll call the question, all those in favor of action item four E, as stated, signify by raising your hand, that motion passes six, zero. Next item is action item four F, purchase riding mower for Washington Township Athletics by Washington Township Athletics.
Well, and that's one of those, luckily we have Mrs. Mater and Mr. Fields here that can help answer some of that question too, because as you'll see, it's kind of involved. It includes some trade-in, donation from the township, but what they are trying to do is get a piece of equipment that would be able to handle the work that they actually put it through, because they do utilize that mower to pull a roller and ZTRs, they're not necessarily designed to pull rollers. However, they do have some now that could potentially do that. So we do ask for permission for the athletic department to purchase the mower as presented. And again, if you have any questions, I am going to defer them.
I just have one thing to add to it, so that would, the cost of this is above our capital asset threshold, so purchasing through the athletic department, up through the corporation, so it would have to be money moved here, we purchase it, so it'll go on our capital asset ledger. So we make sure that's clear that it will actually come out of our funds, but reverse through that.
And anyone's allowed to drive it?
We're working on an MOU at this point in time, that since it will be a mower that can be used by directly, that they designate an individual, we believe we have an identification of that individual, but any other individuals driving it needs to have permission from athletic director or principal in order to make sure that it is maintained and operated appropriately. And in addition, the commercial-grade mower that we are proposing to purchase has a device that is factory-installed on it, that will put the. that will put the nice stripes that you see on a baseball field with no need to drag the roller every time it's mowed. And that's part of what has caused problems with the residential grade mowers that have been used in the past, is that five-hundred-pound roller, it wasn't rated for that. And in actuality, it is not needed to pull that five-hundred-pound roller every time the field is mowed when you have a striping kit on the commercial grade mower.
It's up to every day. Well, my only question is the threshold of being over ten thousand dollars, which is what you're talking about. Um. Hit me, Liz, so my brain functions again. Thank you. Um, did work.
Yes, yeah. We have reported as a capital asset, it has to go through our.
Through the ledger, I understand that, but I have a question. Did I, oh, oh, bid process.
Doesn't qualify, it's still long enough, but it doesn't have to go through.
Even though it's through that buddy.
We have quoted two different manufacturers. And this machine has the higher capacity and higher rating.
Kind of a, what kind of a warranty do you got on it?
Uh, three-year essentially bumper to bumper and
Five hundred hours?
Is that what I said?
Yeah.
Five hundred hours.
Essentially, how many hours a, a year are we putting on it?
Um, we're estimating, uh, that it would be about sixty to seventy hours, and that's mowing essentially five hours or five acres once a week.
What's the deck size?
Sixty-inch deck. Mulching, uh, it's a mulching deck. It's got the, um, striping kit. It's commercial grade.
I was gonna say, it's not a stamped deck.
No. Um, twenty-seven horsepower motor rated at three hundred, or thirty horsepower torque.
And it is a Ferris, which means it's got the suspension so it won't jostle your people. So moved by Mr. Martin.
I just have one more question. If it does need a repair though, it'll be on the district to repair it.
It'll be on the athletic department.
Okay.
That's, that's how those, the, the, the one residential grade machine currently operates.
The move by Mr. Martin, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Starr. Any other questions or comments? How many total, how much do we have there?
There, there is one owned by the athletic department, and that was a donation years ago from what I understand. And then there is a second one that is property of the rec league, and it is currently completely out of commission and requires a three-thousand-dollar motor, but only has a one-thousand-dollar value and a three-hundred-dollar trade-in.
Any other questions, comments? Sing them and I'll call the question. All those in favor of action item four F, purchase riding mower for WT Athletics by WT Athletics, signify by, by raising your hand. And that motion passes six, zero. Next is, uh, action item four G, first reading of policy six-one-one-zero, five-three-seven-two, four-three-two-zero, four-zero-one-eight, and one-three-zero-zero.
So the policies that you have in front of you are actual policies that we have currently in place. Uh, they just had some tweaking due to the current legis, or recent legislation that was passed and to ensure, excuse me, that we are up to speed. Um, and they also, help some also better align with the student handbook that the board, uh, passed earlier this summer. So once again, these are just first readings, uh, has to do with federal grants and award policies, animals in the classroom, student attendance, uh, transfer students. And then, um, board meetings, like the biggest one in the board meetings is our policy is, um, we're just making sure that our time matches up.
I have a question. According to what the state just passed as a law on page two, two, two of forty-eighteen. It says under no circumstances will a transfer student be accepted for athletic reasons. That's changed, right? Yeah, that's, that has.
That law has changed.
Law changed, but the policy itself is still you can't transfer for simply for athletic reasons because they, they, at least in their minds, and the way they're looking at it, they're still going to govern athletic transfers the same as they always have. There's just, if it's not for athletic reasons, they're going to get guaranteed eligibility sooner than they used to give.
Clear as mud. That's different than what we were told, isn't it?
They, every student's allowed one time, but I don't think that it can be.
You cannot.
They, they can't, they can't call it for, say that we're doing it because we want to go to a better team.
And there can't be any, um, relationship between the coach and the student and the athlete. So if there was, like, if you have a coach that coaches on the offseason and coaches a student, and then they transfer to the school where their coach for the summer was at, because of that, um, relationship, they would not be eligible. There would be limited eligibility. So there's still, IH, IHSAA still has policies and bylaws
Right, I understand that.
That we have to follow.
Well, one of the things we were told at our board, at the board meeting
Sure.
in Charlottesville was it's just like the portal for if they're not seniors. So is that not a true statement?
Yes and no.
I, I, I hope that's great, because I'm, I'm hoping that's the case, but I've also talked to other varsity coaches in other areas who are afraid that's not what's gonna happen.
I will get, uh, legal clarity, uh, clarity, um, from Julie Slavens, and then we can also touch base with IHSAA to ensure that that is right. Hence, we have first readings.
The way I was last year at the, uh, Indiana High School Coaching Prevention, the way that you explained exactly the way they explained it to us. That kids can have one-time transfer for athletic reasons. That's what, that's what all the coaches were told. So I, I haven't heard anything about not, so I'd.
And we were told that this, correct, I just, a board meeting that for that, 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 that it was a way that the state is taking away from us again. The ability to make it be for academic reasons only.
And since I SBA told that, I would clarify from my SBA.
That's why we have a first reading, as you said.
Exactly. That's fine. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
The next action item is, action four H, first reading of policies four-three-seven-zero, four-two-two-zero, four-zero-three-zero, three-zero-one-two, eleven-oh-two, and policy four-two-zero-four.
Okay, in front of you on these, these are all new policies. Um, one of them has to do with, uh, cell phone policy. I know that in our handbooks it is already covered, however, um, just to ensure that, uh, there is clarity on that. Our, uh, our handbook is a little bit vague on that. It just goes through and just gives a little bit more clarity. Uh, emergency medication, vaccination, immunization, uh, these are, there's been some legislation changes on how that is. We do not currently have anything along these lines, and these will help protect our nurses who are, um, administering, uh, the, the emergency medication. And then also, um, helping us with the, uh, vaccination immunization, uh, making sure that people are aware of their religious rights to not have to do that. But at the same time, we do have exclusion, um, for people who don't have immunizations if they don't fill out their, uh, religious freedom, um, waivers. Uh, also, there's, uh, the student mental behavioral services records. Uh, this is a required policy, um, this practice that we have. However, we just don't have it in policy, so just making sure that we're cleaning it up. And then the last one is eleven-oh-two, which is, has to do with code of ethics, uh, board member code of ethics.
Isn't there, okay, got it. Questions or comments? Just an observation that, that I would make in this in thirty-twelve. So we're gonna have to have three written references from any individual who is applying at any position. That is, and you're saying, and this is out of Indiana code now.
The, um, three, to have three is not necessarily out of Indiana code, but to make sure that they are technically based with their previous employer is. Uh, this is to have the three as the recommendation from my SBA.
The language does state it should be collected. It doesn't say it must be.
Uh, which paragraph are you in?
Uh, second paragraph. Should be obtained prior to an applicant being employed or hired. So best practice, but.
Yeah, the, the other, the other sentence in there that is different than how we've done things is the very last sentence. Which is references from family members are unacceptable. And when I look at a lot of our references, they're usually from people I knew.
From family members or just people that are?
No, both. So even on, even on, even on our personnel report today, which, which we were fine because this policy isn't in place.
Right.
But it, it would have affected it. So I'm just
One of the challenges that we have.
Thinking about what we're doing before we just
Yeah, correct. And one of the challenges that we have, even when they have three, doesn't necessarily mean that they all return our balls.
So I'm just pointing out things that I noticed first.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate you. Okay. Remember that Mr. McSarren is in HR, so he says that day. Uh, we want to make sure that we do check references. Talking about, yeah, okay. Uh, next, uh, action item is item four I, approval David Blythe donation.
So we are asking the board to approve a, uh, donation equivalent to about four thousand dollars of a weight rack, eight bars, various free weights uh, to the weight room at, uh, Washington Township Middle School High School.
Do I hear a motion for action item four I, approval of David Blythe donation?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. McFalls. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Starr?
No.
Nope, no, no, hey, I got you. I make sure we got it right here. Any questions, comments? Sing them and I'll call the question. All those in favor, approval of David Blythe donation, signify by raising your hand, and that motion passes six, zero. Next, uh, action item is four J, board packet emails.
So the final, um, item on the agenda is just something that has been tabled. I believe it was a motion that, um, Mrs. Moore had put out that has been tabled, uh, for a few different meetings.
Well, I leave that one to the board's player. Do I hear a motion and then explanation or talk about board packet emails?
Yes, I will make a motion, uh, to approve and have all board members required to view the board docs and emails online. So that would mean that central office wouldn't longer print them and then deliver them to houses.
Okay, moved by Mrs. Moore. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Starr. Any, any comments, questions? Well, I would make the comment that I made when it first came up, and that is I can guarantee you that I read every one of these. And we don't get internet credit at our place, so it would be a hardship for us. And I'm gonna ask for it to be voted down because I think that the value to me is more than it not being done. Appreciate that. Any other questions, comments? Go ahead, listen.
I think we have to vote on it first. I would like to make an amendment to it, but I don't know how that works with one that's not a little bit of on here.
What'd you say?
I'd like to make an amendment. I'd say, Steve, this one first, I guess, get shot down. Is that what I, let me see how the votes go for the first one.
Maybe we want to amend.
You can amend your, um, motion.
Yeah, I, I don't, I'm not so much against the, them being printed. I think that maybe you picked it up. That's more where I am as far as, you know, um, getting them to somewhere. I feel like that's just another burden on the district. Um, I fully understand, and you have always read everything. I was not, I'll be honest, you caught every detail at, at times I missed, and so you do review them. They're not a waste of your time, money, or you hand down, go through detail to detail. So I mean, I've seen you do it for years. Um, so my, my caveat would be not necessarily completely getting rid of them, but getting rid of the component that, um, you have to, they're brought to you, you know, or they're brought. So coming down to pick them up, um, would be my preference, but I don't know, conversation wise, if anyone's willing to conversation with that.
The, uh, motion was made by Mrs. Moore. Would you object to, uh, being amended?
I can be amended to that.
Okay. And the second is also?
I am open to that, yes.
Okay.
On there would be still printed, but picked up from the district. Or.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? I'm gonna call the question. All those in favor signify by raising your hand for the motion and amendment. One, two, three, four. Outholds, raise your hand. Two. Motion passes four to two. The next item is any board member discussion? Any board member discussion? What about additional items from the superintendent?
Just, uh, thank you for coming tonight. It's, uh, summer has been a whirlwind. It has been feverishly, our principals have been working to get everybody staffed. Um, we are getting really, really close, obviously, tonight, and some changing personnel is creating some additional openings. Um, but at the same time, we're pretty excited, uh, about, uh, the direction that we're heading, uh, you know, pretty excited about the new goals. Uh, and getting everybody, um, it is hard to believe that August eleventh is just around the corner. Wish all of our families and our students good luck as the Port County Fair is getting off and running. I had the opportunity to, uh, be at Rotary today and meet the, uh, Port County Fair Queen and her port and all the different things that have already been taking place at the fairgrounds. And, uh, we're excited and looking forward to a great fair, which we know that our community is heavily involved.
Couple people here, huh?
Yeah, we get a few people out of, in about, uh, ten to fourteen days, maybe they can get a nap.
You, you mentioned the you mentioned the first day, opening day for East Port County School Corporation. Are you, we having a big kickoff again?
We are looking to do, um, some sort of a kickoff on the eleventh.
Okay.
So we are, uh, waiting for Mrs., uh, Schnick to get back, and I'm heading out for vacation, uh, this evening after our board meeting adjourns. And then, once we get everybody back, uh, we'll have everything set up and we'll send out your invitations, um, for that August eleventh.
Will we cook in anything or?
No, no cooking.
Okay.
No cooking.
All right, all right. Well, I would entertain a motion for adjournment. Do I hear a motion for adjournment?
Station.
I got you. Is there a second? Second by Mrs. McFalls. It's the county's connection. All those in favor of adjournment signify by raising your hand. That motion passes six, zero. I hope you come in this evening. Appreciate you. Y'all have a great evening. The board never.